Good evening. I'd like to call the order, the regular school board meeting of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13, of Tuesday, April 8th, 2014. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Bardell?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Landwehr?
Here.
Ms. Meyer?
Here.
Ms. Lee's here.
Great, thank you. Our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging everyone, all, to discover their talents and unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values, as we all know, are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next on our agenda this evening is the Agenda Approval Adjustments Announcements and Correspondence. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I'll move that forward.
Second. Motion by Laura, second by John, any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. All who's in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? And motion is carried. Thank you. Announcements, April 15th, Tuesday, 6:00 PM, school board work session here in the community room. April 18th, Friday, no school. April 22nd, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting here in the community room. May 13th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting, community room, May 13th. Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence?
Mr. Chair members, there's none tonight.
Very good. Alright, next on our agenda is communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request. That the administration follow up, however, the board will not take action at this meeting on request presented at this time. Anyone like to come before the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda, which is our next agenda item, which consists of minutes of the March 11th, 20th, school board meetings, personnel report, lane changes, treasures report for February 2014. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda? So moved.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Laura, any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All who's in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Then motion carried. Thank you. Next on our agenda, discussion reports, information items. Board members will report on board activities since last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Should I start with Ms. Lori Meyer?
Actually, I have nothing to report this time.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Landwehr?
I had a great time at the, on Friday, at the Highland PTO, like bingo, in Highlander Center. It was a great, great group, great crowd there, and I think everybody had a great time playing bingo for lots of wonderful prizes and raising a lot of, hopefully, a lot of money for the PTO.
Oh, great.
And then tomorrow, I'm excited to be able to tour North Park with Principal Sosick and to see all the great things that are going on there. And then I also attended the Chamber Business Council meeting, and the Lions meeting, had coffee with a constituent, and answered a constituent question.
Great, thanks. Mr. Larkin?
Last Wednesday, I had the opportunity to attend the Rotary meeting, and we had an opportunity there to talk about the fundraiser that is taking place at the end of the month, collaboration with the schools, and I'll touch on that in a little bit. Friday, I was able to attend at Columbia Academy, The It Takes a Village, where they invited parents, grandparents, any, any adults that are supporting members of any of the children. They're part of their, their growth, and then I had a really good time at the variety show. Columbia Academy hosted their annual variety show. A lot of talented kids down there, and it was really, really fun to watch, and then I also was at the Highlander Center on Friday for their bingo as well. So, got a chance to, and I was there early, I think I saw when you came in, I didn't know whether the crowd get, get a pretty good-sized crowd. They had quite a few when I was there.
Stayed for quite a while.
Good, then they did have a good crowd throughout the night, so hopefully they did make a lot of money. That would be nice to see. And the only other thing I guess I didn't want to remind people about is, is on April 30th, we've got our, the fundraiser that, it's the city, the schools, and actually a lot of community partners are working together with SECA to raise money, to be able to provide for the, the schools, jackets, hats, mittens, things that, you know, kids that might not otherwise be able to afford them when they truly, truly need them. So it, it's a big event. We just had a meeting again today. Things are moving forward. There's been a lot of people talking about it, so. It's five to eight on April 30th, so mark your calendars.
Will do. Thank you. Ms. Palmer?
Well, I attended a 916 meeting. That's the intermediate district that handles a lot of our special education needs. And one of the topics of discussion was a blended plan for being able to deal with Capital View. We also voted to approve a, a lease purchase for some property for what they're kind of dubbing as more of like a Carner Blue East, which it would be looking at phasing in about three or four years, but we've gotten a lot of the reports back on, you know, soil conditions and things like that, so it looks pretty good to go. So we made the commitment to actually purchase that property. The nine, the Capital View Center, they're, because of the different constraints that an intermediate school district has and their sources of funding, they're looking at perhaps maybe doing more of a, a tear-down and rebuild of that particular location. There's a large courtyard that's in the center of the building, which the, the, the fire code does not allow them to actually use, so it's a lot of wasted space. So they're looking at perhaps doing it in phases where they could build all of their HVAC and all of their air exchange systems outside of the building, so that it doesn't disrupt a lot of the, of the activities that go in, like the Wells program would be very difficult to move, so moving administration over to a, a, another location, a temporary location, and be able to continue some of the programs out of there. So that looks like perhaps another idea on being able to handle it, because it's a, it's a fabulous location, especially for us, and it would be a shame to lose that. And then I attended the NSBA conference down in New Orleans, and I would like to report out on that, but that'll take a little bit longer than I think we want to spend right now, so.
Okay.
We'll spend some more time later.
Ms. Lee?
Basically, it's just the same. I had, I attended the NSBA conference, and I will be reporting out next week. And also, I will be reporting out on, I have a state board meeting on Sunday to Monday, so.
Very good. I attended a couple of synchronized swimming meets and a couple of Rotary meetings for the past couple of weeks, so. That's my report. Superintendent Kelly?
Mr. Chair members, I attended the NSBA conference with both Directors Lee and Palmer, and I wanted to say that I would love to share some things that I brought back. But while I was there, there were three Minnesota districts that presented at the conference, and Columbia Heights Public Schools was one of them. Kind of fun to do a presentation at a national conference. The presentation I was a part of was a breakout session on music education programs. And Minnetonka and Robinsdale also presented on other topics at the conference, so for the state of Minnesota was very well represented. And we'll talk more about some of the rest of that in our learnings later. Director Holmgren and I met with Northeast Bank officials to close on the Valley View addition. We did the paperwork for the new construction. And Local 710, President Coleman Nimoroff and I met for the last time in this month, because there's a new union president starting. And so he's passing the baton to a teacher at Highland Elementary, Mr. Coleman, excuse me, Mr. Carl Lightbody. And so, we're going to begin the transition, and Coleman and I have been together for a while, so it was, it's kind of bittersweet, but he, so he said he'll be with us, but in different forms. So, congratulations to Carl and adieu to Mr. Nimoroff. Mayor Peterson called me while I was down in, at the conference, and he personally congratulated Columbia Academy and the school district for receiving yet another award in music education, and that was from NAM, which stands for the National Association of Music Merchants. And he, he said how proud he was for our, that we'd be once again acclaimed for our instrumental music program and the support. And we were one of two school districts in the state of Minnesota to get that. Anoka received another award from NAM and then Columbia Heights Public Schools. So, he was thrilled as the mayor. Liz Bray had a special request that I'd like to honor, because our students are all over it, and the first announcement I'd like to say is that the 8th Annual Sister City Young Artist Author Showcase is taking place Wednesday night, tomorrow, August, April 9th, at 7:00 PM. And artists and authors are Columbia Heights students that are the ages of 13 to 18 years old, and the artwork will be displayed at Mersion Hall. And there will be music, cookies, and punch, and the, the city is really encouraging the public to come out and see the wonderful things that the children, the students have done. Both the artwork and the statements will be on display. There'll be judging that will take place that evening, and the awards will be given out. And only one piece of the artwork will move on to the national level. Five pieces of the poetry will move on to the national level, and the theme this year is "Connect Globally, Thrive Locally." Second big thing that's happening, and I would encourage students in our audience as well, to contemplate is, who will be the next Heights idol? And that will be at the 8th Annual Event in Columbia Heights, and the additions start this week, and will continue for the next couple of weeks. We're searching for talented youth, adults, and seniors. There'll be prizes and trophies and different, different judges at both events. Round one will occur Thursday, May 15th, at 7:00 PM at Mersion Hall. And round two would be occurring at, on Saturday, June 28th, at 6:30 outside of Mersion Hall, on an open-air stage during the Heights Jamboree City Celebration. So if you need any more information, please call Liz Bray down at City Hall. I see that Laura Palmer has on the new name tag. And so if any of the other board members at the table would like to receive theirs, or you have them. I want to thank Don Hoyam and Casey Maum for putting those together. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, next on our agenda this evening, we have the building vision card from North Park Elementary. And our presenters this evening are Mr. Jeff Sosick, our North Park Elementary Principal, and Dwayne Burkus, Director of Teaching and Learning. Gentlemen?
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. As you know, I, I have the luxury of sitting next to all these great principals and introducing them, and let them tell you all the great things that are going on in their buildings. And North Park obviously is doing some great things. I know that you know about many of those things, and exciting for me, just last week, I believe it was, to be over there and help judge one of the project-based learning exercises or activities that they had. I think, actually, Principal Sosick may refer to it, but just really seeing that excitement in kids' eyes, that joy of learning something and being in something very real in their lives. So, lots of great things happening at North Park. I want to make sure Jeff gets all the time he needs to present that to you, so, Jeff.
Okay. Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, good evening. Thanks for having me. Strategic plan time. So of course, we're going to start off with the requisite important things that our district bases itself in. Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. And of course, our core values of community excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We will have a very large dose of innovation for you tonight. So, there's our building and our strategic plan. So, take a look at enrollment. Our enrollment is up, and over the last three years, we've got, have a significant increase. October 1 of 2010, we were at 429 students. October 1 of 2013, we were 503. So that's about a 20% increase over that short period of time, and, and as you know, we feel it, but we love it. Our demographics, our demographics actually have shifted along with the rest of the district. We're looking about 80% of our students are free reduced lunch right now. 70% are free, 10% are reduced, which is a common trend. When you look at our special ed and EL populations, our special ed population is 14.3%. I know it is the highest among the elementaries and maybe among all of, all of the schools, but we also house three setting three programs. So that does increase our numbers a bit. And our EL population has boomed. We're at, well, 37%, I used October 1st numbers, we're actually a bit higher than that right now. We're, we're beginning to hit the cusp of 40%. AYP data, and I'm, I know that you guys certainly have received a lot of information on all of our schools. And as you can see, we went down a little bit in math. That was, that was concerning. We expected to see a significant dip in reading like everyone else did, but the math one is definitely one that we're tending to right now. We're focusing some specific interventions on that. With reading, we saw a similar dip to the rest of the state. Our science remained strong, and, and we, quite honestly, were a bit surprised because our testing conditions did not work out incredibly well in that the test was a little bit different and didn't have a natural stop halfway through the test, so our kids actually took the entire test in one sitting. They still scored better than the state average, and we're very proud of them. They did quite well, and we suspect we'll do significantly better this year. Strategic roadmap, again, I like to take a real hard look at turbocharging and innovation. Those are really, really important concepts to me and to our vision at North Park. So, looking at the scorecard, I'd like to bring your attention to A2 in particular, because that's something that we're doing a bit differently this year. When we're looking at the PLC, moving forward with PLCs, and time is always an issue with us, in, in really doing PLCs the way that we wish. But we've got 100% of our staff in PLCs this year, and that's the first time we've had 100%. The way that we've done that is each of our staff meetings is now a PLC. It's an equity PLC. And it's something we started in October. I will do a quick announcements section, I call it the boring part, for the first 10 minutes of the meeting, and then our Dean of Students, Tanya Sturm, gets the fun part of the meeting with the actual learning. And, and it's something, we have breakout groups they're assigned to, and the, the groups remain constant, and it's, it's been a, a very good use of our time. And staff feedback has been fantastic. And looking, I'd also take you, like you to put your attention on A7. Taking a look at the presence of multi-tiered interventions for academics. We still do our, our specific reading interventions and math interventions, but we have another intervention in place this year. It's project-based learning, and that is one of our significant interventions. We are convinced that if students are given the opportunity to enrich themselves, that it will work as an intervention. Really, you could argue that school's an intervention. But with project-based learning, the level of engagement with students continues to rise. It's, I do have some products to share at the end of the presentation, and I, I hope you're all as impressed as I am with it. Moving on to the next, parent engagement is something we've really been focused on quite a lot at North Park, and I know in the district. We have a lot more presence in the building among our volunteers. We have a very active volunteer program that was really, has, has come out of, has been the fruit of our Latino Parent Leadership Academy that we've had for five years, and we continue that this year. We do have a lot of Latino parents that are volunteers, but we also have parents that are, that are not Latino, that are volunteering an awful lot, too. We also have, are beginning to get some significant participation on our equity team, and also on our family involvement team from parents. And our focus of each one of our teams in PLCs this year has an equity bent. And, and I'm happy to say that we do have, we do have diversity among our parents on each of those teams that have really helped us lead some courageous conversations as a staff. Now, let's take a look at our, our growth, our MAP growth. And we, we hit our baseline in math with 64% of our students meeting their growth targets, and in reading, it was, it was very much like what we saw with the MCAs, but again, our cut scores changed for the MAP along with going to the MCA3. So as the standard raises, you know, so does the cut scores for MAP. So it's an area of high concern, but, but we know how to get out of it. We've done it before, and it won't be for long. One thing I am proud of is the percentage of students by student group meeting NWA MAP growth. That's basically a fancy terminology for achievement gap, and we're at a progressing level for that. And again, looking at these scores, you are aware of our MCA data, and I just shared that before, and we are at intervention level there. And again, we're aware of it. We, we understand how to get out of it, and, and we will. Our MCA math scores are at the vision level, our, our science scores are at the vision level, and they will remain there. Another area, again, that's associated with the achievement gap, B8, that we're very pleased with, are the differences between student groups. We are a bit concerned with the high-concern level for reading, and that's the, the special population we're looking at. There are EL students. So, that is, is not a surprise necessarily, but it's also not acceptable. And then, and level four for math, it's our African-American special population, is, is at a 16% gap with, with our white students. So on to our SMART goals. In literacy, 65% of our students will meet or exceed their growth targets on MAP. And then looking at our MCA scores, at least 50% of our third through fifth graders will be proficient on reading. We hope it is higher than that, but we figured a 6% increase at this point was something that was attainable. For math, again, 65% of our students will meet their target scores, and 60% of our students will be proficient on the MCA math. And we also have a goal for science. This year, our goal is that 61% of our fifth-grade students are proficient. And that would be a significant increase, but it's one that we're expecting. And the particular group that we're working with this year in fifth grade, they've, they've been with us through kindergarten, most of them with science, and they're a pretty gifted group of scientists. Looking at our behavior referrals, which have remained consistent over time, we would like to see a 10% decrease in those. So let's get on to the fun stuff, the initiatives. The books we're looking at here, these are books that most of our staff are reading. A couple of Ken Robinson books, and I know most of you have, have seen Sir Ken speak, and, and that goes without saying. I don't even need to describe what, what kind of information we're getting there. The other two are The Third Teacher, which, you know, I've presented to the board before, but it is a book that teaches us about the nexus between space and learning, and the important role that space plays as the third teacher. And then the book, the last book I'll mention is Yong Zhao's World Class Learners, which is something that Superintendent Kelly brought to the administrative team over the summer, and we brought it to our staff. It's an absolutely brilliant book that talks about the importance of entrepreneurship in our schools. And when I say entrepreneurship, I'm not speaking of small business creation. I'm talking about turning ideas into reality. And ultimately, that is what we're doing. We're creating products at North Park. Family involvement, I know that I did say a few words, but I also had to throw in a few pictures of our wonderfully active family groups. We actually have a really fun few evenings coming up here in, at the end of April and the beginning of May, and we're going to have technology nights. It's actually going to be instructional for parents, because the kids are so far ahead of their parents, like they are in many cases ahead of us with technology, that we're offering some classes using some of our family involvement funds to, to invite folks in for a meal and, and provide childcare, and to teach parents some technology skills. Staff learning, I believe I see a picture of Superintendent Kelly there. I think she attended one of our, one of our leadership team meetings. Staff learning, we have to feed ourselves, and, and we're very, very intentional to continuously feed ourselves at North Park, because if we're not learning ourselves, then how in the world can we expect our, our children to learn? And then community learning. Community learning is, is something that has really come out of, it's, it's been a wonderful byproduct of the learning studios, to be perfectly honest. Every Wednesday afternoon, we do tours, because there's quite a demand for it. And, and we really, we had to place a day, and, and okay, we will sacrifice Wednesday afternoons, which isn't really a sacrifice, because it's a lot of fun. But, but we will use Wednesday afternoons, and we're not going to go beyond that, and we are, we were consistently booked four to six weeks out with outside organizations. And you'll see on the left there, you see me in the background with, with Professor John Kamatsi. He's a professor of architecture at the University of Minnesota, and he is actually doing a study on the learning studios. He's hired a graduate student who spends 15 hours a week at North Park doing observations. They're studying the role that, that, that space plays in learning and student engagement in particular. So we, we have a two-pronged approach to evaluating our programming in the learning studios. And Dr. Kamatsi is delivering one of them with looking at the space in particular. His product will be, he's going to create what he calls a free toolkit, which is Free Range Elementary Education Toolkit, so that as we expand, we can see the factors that have helped make us successful, and we can see the factors that are a challenge. And it's also going to, he is, he's working in concert with Cunningham Group of Architects, and it will be a toolkit that they also will use for future projects with other schools, which is something I'll talk about a little bit more later. So, Be Like North Park. What this means is there have been an awful lot of educators and politicians from around the state that have been interested in what we're doing, and have asked to, to do some tours, and so I'm going to run down a list. It's not the full list, but just a list of people that have visited for tours this year. So the second-grade teachers from Greenwood Elementary in Wayzetta came over this summer, and they are doing some of our programming and hoping to do some construction over the summer. Class field trip for pre-service teachers from St. Claude State University. So we had an entire class of undergraduates that came and spent an afternoon with us to explore our space. Every elementary school principal from Adina has visited. The director of teaching and learning from Adina has been there twice. Every teacher and administrator from St. Paul Public Schools Gaultier Elementary. And Gaultier is working with Cunningham now, and they are going to be remodeling their entire school to be learning studios. And that will start next year. Principals and directors from Inver Grove Heights. Principal and third-grade teachers from Riverview Elementary in Farmington. Mespa North Suburban Principals hosted a meeting. We helped host a meeting in our learning studios. It was 27 principals total from Osseo, Anoka, Hanipen, and St. Francis. John Millerhagen, who's the executive director of Mespa, which Mespa, of course, is the Minnesota Elementary School Principals Association. District 37A Representative Jerry Newton. District 36 Senator John Hoffman. Director of Best Academy. Tony Palumbo, Anoka County Attorney. Five different principals from St. Paul Public Schools. Sharon Freeman, Assistant Superintendent in St. Paul. Seven teachers from St. Paul Public Schools Eastern Heights Elementary, and there are more on the way in May. Lee Vang, Technology Integration Specialist at St. Paul Eastern Heights. Coordinator of Personal Learning from St. Paul. Principal, tech director, and teachers from AK Charter School in Duluth. It's just called the Duluth Charter School. Two Austin Minnesota elementary principals. In fact, Dewey from Austin, he's actually been out four times in the last two years. He was there before we did the construction and has been there three times since. And four principals and the director of curriculum and instruction from Grand Rapids Public Schools. And at this point, well, Ted will be out tomorrow. We're taking a break for MCAs, and then after that, we're already booked through May 14th. Additionally, we've been, Brian Hennigan, who Brian's not here tonight, but Brian and I have been invited to do several presentations. So we've presented the TIES Annual Members Meeting with Kathy. We also presented at the TIES Conference. There actually were four presentations regarding learning studios at this year's TIES Conference. Brian and I did two for principals, and we had four teachers from the second-grade learning studio that did two different presentations at TIES that they were invited to do so. Brian and the superintendent and I also were signed up for a presentation at MASA, the MASA Annual Conference in March. And I just found out yesterday that I will also be doing a presentation at TIES Tech Camp for principals this summer. So what is, why? Why is this? It's because there's an awful lot of interest in 21st century learning. And I know that you all are aware of the principles of 21st century learning, but I'm just going to say them in the microphone again. We focus on the four Cs at North Park. If all our students can do when they graduate from high school is pass a reading test and a math test, they're not going to be prepared for a 21st- a math test, they're not going to be prepared for a twenty-first century economy. They have to be able to collaborate, they have to be able to communicate, they have to be creative and they have to be able to think critically. And we are bringing home the goods at North Park and that's really the reason that we're gathering, garnering so much attention. I had to have another page because I had too many really cute pictures. You guys don't like those, do you? So I'm just going to, on my last slide here before questions, I'm going to talk a little bit about project-based learning and the relationship that it's played, not only with our school as a whole, but in particular in our learning studios. It was an idea that the third grade team came up with last year as they were planning. The fourth grade team for next year is planning now and they have some wonderful ideas that I look forward to presenting to you next year. But the third grade team decided that the hook they wanted to hang their hat on was going to be project-based learning. So with the help of Director Burkus, we were able to bring the Buck Institute in over the summer and we trained thirty-five of our staff for three days in Project-Based Learning one oh one. And the two projects I want to talk about tonight are actually three, I'm going to talk about fifth grade too, because they have a service and not a product. They've been performing leadership. Right now, we have four junior coaches each day that help out at Playworks. They go out and they mentor our K-four kids at Playworks, which is formerly Recess. And it's a rotating, the four of them, they, it's always four, but there are seventy-nine kids that rotate through it. And in addition, they have done several leadership things around the building, not the least of which is two of our fifth grade students, as a part of their project-based learning, created their own encore class. They have, they have a teacher, Mrs. Roth, who is there and she's supervising and taking attendance and so on, but these two boys, they plan for every single one of them, it's a games, it's a game class, and they lead the group and they mentor the group. And so, those are the sort of things we've been seeing from fifth grade through project-based learning. In third grade, which I know Director Burkus mentioned it earlier, they took on design. We're all really into space and we're into design and I know you all are familiar with that courtyard. Director Lee, I'm sure is quite intimately familiar with that. The courtyard that we've never really been able to figure out exactly what to do with it. And that's because we're adults, our ideas aren't as good as kid ideas. And so, their project this year was, this is a courtyard, do something cool, design something cool that we can do. Of course, it started out really cool, but not realistic because I don't think, when I heard the idea for the Ferris wheel, the water slide that had my office as a landing pad and the McDonald's, we gave them a tape measure and they went outside and they determined not only were they financially unrealistic, but they probably wouldn't fit. Their ideas got a lot more realistic as they did more research. And one of our teachers, Ms. Alicia Bjork, believed firmly that nine-year-olds can use SketchUp. And so, as they got their ideas down on paper, she said, "Okay, boys and girls, this is SketchUp, this is, this is how you go on, figure out how to use it." A week later, they started putting their projects into SketchUp. So there were groups of four, ninety kids, groups of four, so what is it, twenty-two and a half groups, twenty-three groups? And they got each of their present, or each of their projects into SketchUp and then they presented them to one another. And the class chose four finalists. They did cost analyses for those four projects to prove that they were realistic. And then, we brought in a team of judges. They're all outside, you know, I didn't want to be one of those judges because I couldn't pick four winners. And so, Director Burkus, Director Hennigens, Bonnie Loman, who's our master gardener, Principal Busman came out for it. We had one of our parents from second grade and also John Fluger, our principal architect from Cunningham, came out and judged. And I would like just to share two of the products. This is Bella and Elvie did this design and they, they won the award for most original. We had to find awards for each one of them, so there was best use of space, there was most original, there was best presentation, which was brilliant and we have on video, go to our website and check it out because Milo is hysterical. And this one was the most original. Now, you'll notice there's a kitchen there.
Yeah.
And that is an outdoor kitchen, they researched what exactly they would need to have an outdoor kitchen. And the idea for it came as they were reviewing versions of edible schoolyards in California. And they were really focused on having edibles and being able to cook them on the spot. Kind of like, kind of like a vegetarian shore lunch, you know? But the other thing, there were absolutely, there were no requirements about what they had to do with the space and every single one of them had an instructional space. You see, they had an instructional space here, a nice path. This area right here, this is pretty cool, it doesn't look like anything, but what you need to know is they drew this themselves on SketchUp. Some things come from a warehouse and some things are drawn and there, each one of the kids had some of their own drawings and that's really difficult to do. And that was something our architect, John, when he was judging, he stopped right in the middle of one of the presentations, he said, "How old are you guys?" And we're nine. Said, "You're nine and you're using SketchUp." He said, "You know how old I was when I learned to use SketchUp? I was forty-eight." And there are a lot of people that I work with that say, "I still can't use it." And so, I mean, he just, so much positive feedback from professionals in the industry. So anyway, that was the most original. Now, the winner, the winner was Hannah and Ibrahim's. And Hannah wasn't able to be there for the presentation, she was out sick that day and one of, the kids, they were so non-competitive in how they did this, one of the kids from another group just stepped up and just did a brilliant job, you would never have known that that child wasn't, wasn't one of the original designers. And I think overall, that's one of the things that struck me the most, is you saw kids working together, even when they were, when they were getting feedback from the judges, we would bring one group at a time into the conference room, you know, so high stress and the other groups are outside and they're saying, "Well, you know, we could take this from yours and this from ours and we can make one like super design," you know? They're trying to figure out how to just get everybody included. But anyway, this is, this is the winning design. We really, we really liked the Feng Shui and the design, there's probably only one thing here that isn't real realistic and that's the retractable roof. That of course depends very much upon, you know, grant writing and so on, I don't see us having a retractable roof. But they were realistic, they said, "We put that in there because we think it's cool and we like it, but we also know it'll probably get eliminated when we start looking at budgets." But everything else makes an awful lot of sense. You've got the little gazebo there, you've got the chair swings. One of the things that really worked in their favor were they chose to have raised beds for their gardens. And when the judges asked why they chose raised beds, without hesitation, they said, "Well, because we have several children in wheelchairs at North Park. And not only do we want them to be able to navigate through the garden, we want the raised beds to be tall enough that they can actually plant and help plant and really participate in the garden like everyone else." And then, this piece here is a sculpture. And that sculpture is something that in art class, each of the third grade classes came up with three different sculpture designs that were then put into 3D with poster board and voted on at Fine Arts Night last week. And so, we do have a winner there also and Arian Kokesh, our art teacher, is working to make that a reality, so that will be in there. Now, this winning team has become a part of our grant writing team because this is real, this is real-life stuff, this is, this is relevant stuff for kids. And they, we've already won two grants that are smaller and there's a larger grant that is due tomorrow. And they were a part of that team and Bonnie Loman is really taking on the lion's share of that writing. And hopefully, we win that grant and we can get everything, maybe even a retractable roof, I don't know. Bill Holmgren doesn't know anything about that, this is all news to him. Okay, and then in second grade, we had some wonderful projects also. This was linked directly to their science and engineering. And in one of their engineering projects, they had to make Play-Doh. They were given several different ingredients and they had to choose which ingredients would make the best Play-Doh. And so, there were groups of three and each group of three made three different Play-Dos and then chose which one was the best. And then, as a part of project-based learning, they were charged with marketing their Play-Doh. Some of them created print ads and some of them created commercials. And we had four advertising professionals that came in the week before spring break and were there for presentations, you're seeing a common theme, presentation is very important to us. We know that most of the jobs we're going to want our kids to have in the twenty-first century are going to require articulate presentation and if they wait until they're thirty years old to learn how to present, they're not going to be any good at it. So they need to start when they're eight and that's what they're doing. So the group, one of the winning groups that, well, they're all really cute, this one's really good. One of the winning groups was Aralyn and Tanaye and Lorenzo. And we're going to take a look at that right now, we've got it up on the Youtubes.
Awesome Play-Doh.
Looking for fun and baller, just try our Play-Doh, awesome Play-Doh.
It's so cool.
It's so awesome.
It's so awesome.
You'll flip for our Play-Doh.
All right, let's go with smiley face.
See you at the main course, bye.
And no, their parents didn't do any of this, they couldn't work on this at home, so they only have access at school. So in a nutshell, that's, that's the stuff that's happening at North Park of which I'm most proud. Do you have any questions or concerns?
Where do you begin with questions and comments? Oh, that just looks terrific. I love to see the kids engaged and excited about learning. And what are we doing, what is your plans for fourth grade? Do we have second and third?
Yes, we started planning with staff in November to start working with them from the development standpoint. They are really focused on video. They've also read Yong Zhao and so they're really taking a close look at entrepreneurship and turning ideas into reality. And it's still a work in progress, but they're, they're becoming very, very confident and they have a good idea of what kind of space that they're going to want, or what kind of space their programming is going to demand. We have set a date with the Cunningham folks and it's going to be May fifth, we're going to sit and have our design charrette. And, you know, we've done this often enough now that we're, you know, we know what to expect and how, know how quickly we can get finished, we expect that everything will be on order and being shipped by the time school ends.
And would I be able to attend your tour tomorrow?
I would love it if you came, absolutely.
I happen to have some time available tomorrow.
Okay, twelve-thirty.
Twelve-thirty, I'll be there, thank you.
Nice presentation, thanks for coming. My questions of all involve parent parental participation, two parts, how do you get so many parents to participate? And secondly, what kinds of things do they volunteer to do in the school?
Well, you know, it's a number of things, it's like what we ask them to do is what, is what their passion, what they want to do. In many cases, they come in and say, you know, "We will do anything," you know, "What do your kindergarten teachers need?" So oftentimes, you'll see four, five, six parents sitting in the office around a table cutting out stuff for kindergarten prep, you know? We also have many parents that read with students. We have some parents that have been reading with students long enough, they've begun to take on a bit of a mentoring role, so you'll see a parent walking through, through the hallways with a student who's just having a chat with them. And we also have begun to engage our volunteers using an online scheduler. So our teachers, we're just piloting this right now, we're really going to roll it out next year, but our teachers will put a need that their classroom or their grade level has and then parents can access that online and say, "Yep, I can take care of that and I can do it at this time." And so, it just automatically gets scheduled onto a teacher's Google Calendar. It's something that it's never, we never feel like it's enough and we want every single parent in there as often as we can get them. Our evening events, we get tons of parent engagement, I mean, you know, most of you have seen that. But during the day engagement can be a challenge, especially with our location, because most of the folks aren't going to be walking to our school, they have to drive. But I just think that using, with the talent of our urban liaison in particular, we've really been able to engage a really passionate set.
Thanks.
Yeah, Ted.
Kind of to piggyback off of that, are you able to engage parents in the day-to-day learning of their students through, you know, how good is the communication back home as to what my student is doing during the day?
You know, in the elementaries, it's a little bit easier in some ways, I mean, while the parents don't necessarily use Parent Portal, because we don't have like that grading system that really is friendly in Parent Portal, we do have the Thursday folders, which are amazing things because parents look at it, they know, "On Thursday, I'm looking." And that's where a lot of communication comes from. We also do an awful lot of phone calling and emailing as much as possible. Our websites, in particular, our second and third grade websites are very comprehensive and in fact, many kids have to, have to access the websites for most of the homework that they would be working on. And so, really, we engage parents an awful lot that way. We've had over twenty-five thousand hits on our website since September and that's a vast improvement. Our Dean of Students, Tanya Stern, has worked really hard on the website. Last year, we started, we started the counter in January and we had, I think, fourteen or fifteen hundred hits by the end of the year and then twenty-five thousand this year so far. We've also begun using Twitter, so check us out, North Park LM, North Park LM, and then also, North Park Principal under Jay Sossick. And we have a regular routine. On Mondays, we tweet out something cool that's going to happen this week and on Tuesdays, we celebrate staff, we take pictures of things staff are doing and tweet them out. On Wednesdays, it's a wild card, so I get to pick, it's usually science or technology-oriented. Thursdays, we are going to start tweeting out electronic versions of the Thursday folders so parents can access them that way. And Fridays are my blog post, which is another thing I would invite you to take a look at. I try to post as often as possible, weekly is my goal, I at least try to get a couple a month in, but it is attached to our website and starting to have some guest bloggers too, just in case I'm getting boring to everybody out there, so.
What were the tweets, what's the?
Okay, tweet is NorthParkLM, E-L-E-M. And then, my handle is Jay Sossick.
Yeah, I think that's so important because parents are the primary teachers and we have to have, we can't do it without them.
Absolutely.
Jeff, do you want to mention the home visits program too?
Oh, geez, how about that? Yeah, that seems so long ago, it's all the way at the beginning of the year. And actually, we just, we just had a follow-up meeting with them on Monday or yesterday, so I should remember that. But we're also taking part in the home pilot, piloting the home visit project with Columbia Academy. So our teachers, twenty of our teachers were trained and fifty of our families were chosen to take part in it. And it will, it consists of two different home visits in the year. The first ones, we really wanted to get them done, before school would have been great, but that's not always realistic, so we really tried to get them finished in the first three or four weeks of school. And they were not business academic-based, we're not coming to you with problems or anything like that, we're coming to you just to meet you, to talk to you about, you know, what your hopes and dreams are for your child and just to get to know you. And we really created some wonderful relationships there, in fact, teachers went far above and beyond those fifty families. And then, the follow-ups will be beginning actually this week, some of them have already begun. So those follow-up ones, we're leaving it up to the teachers what, what they want to talk about, it can just be another social visit. It could, you know, be talking a little bit more about student academics, really, most of the teachers are going to let the, the parents determine the content of the meeting. But it's definitely something we'd like to see continue.
Well, obviously, you're leading the way with so many visitors and, you know, this is right out of TIES, you know, the technology conferences that I've been to and remember Palmer's been to and you've been to, to see how, how well this, this works, so.
Well, thanks Ted, I've got, I've got the best group of teachers and families that I could ever hope for, it really makes my job a lot easier.
Well, I just want to say thank you, this is, it was really exciting to see the different changes that are coming forward. You know, we talk about parent engagement, but what you're doing is empowering kids and it's all about kids. And they are your greatest ambassadors of communication to their parents. So, and I can just see by what you're doing that that's exactly what you're, you know, that's happening. Because beyond the Thursday folders and the tweeting and all that, the ones that are going to come home with the big news are the kids. And you're doing a great job, you're doing an awesome job. And yes, I do remember that courtyard and the rocks. So, but it's really fun to see that and see that you are empowering them and allowing them to use their creativity. That's- That's huge, and I think we'll see many, many things happening as they move forward in the different schools. So thank you so much for all your hard work.
Thank you, Missy.
I actually have a question that I'm sure that's been kind of out there pondering and stuff and still a couple of years out. But what are, are some of the things that we might be looking at when these students are in these learning environments, move up to a more traditional setting?
Well, actually, the one comment that I've heard most often from Principal Busman is, thanks for giving me four years to prepare. And I know that that has been one of the reasons, one of many reasons, that she's taken such a close look at implementing the personal learning initiative in sixth grade. And it sounds like they're having an awful lot of success with that. And that's a real good place to start. Because really, this is not necessarily about space. This is about space matching programming. Our programming demanded that space. But really, it is about the programming, and that's what I tell all of my tourists. It's like, you can look at the space, but if you don't have the co-teaching and you don't have the programming, don't worry about the space because you don't need it. And so the bottom line is, is it sounds like the academy has some outstanding programming that is really going to meet these kids' needs.
That's good to know. Thank you.
It's also, I just wanted to have one comment. It is, we've heard many times how important it is to have students ready so when they enter the academy that they're ready to go and they don't need to be remediated. And so it sounds like your program is working well for that as well.
Thanks.
Thanks for getting the message out to a lot of other people too, because I actually have heard from people from Wayzetta and Edina that have actually contacted me and said that they've seen what you're doing. So it's been really good for just our PR too, to have that out there.
You know, I'm going way too long for here, but I shared with an Edina principal what I tell my staff all the time. I said, you know, it's not about catching Edina, it's about transcending them. And I told, I told one of their principals that, and he said, I'm going to use that with my staff. Do you know what they're saying in Columbia Heights?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you again for coming, Jeff. Appreciate it.
The pleasure's mine.
All right. Next on our agenda this evening is the K-12 Activities Council Report. And we have Dwayne Burkers, Director of Teaching Learning, and our own Matt Miller, K-12 Activities Director.
Chair Birdell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. My pleasure also tonight to sit next to our Activities Director, Matt Miller, who I've had the pleasure of working with in my role as leading the Activities Council. As you recall, two years ago now, this is our third year out, I guess, already, Director Holmgren and myself worked at that time with Task Force that Superintendent Kelly had formed to really look at our activities and see what we would need to do to move things forward in ways that perhaps we had not been doing for a while. And so we came up with quite a few action items that we put in place. And from that, one of the action items that was put forward was to form an Activities Council that would represent both the school district, the city, our communities, and be able to provide feedback on how we're doing, concerns, questions, be a place for us to come together several times a year. So last year, we began meeting, and Principal Busman and I helped lead it that year. This year, it's really fun to be able to be working with our Activities Director with that. And so Matt and I just finished chairing a meeting just a week ago, I believe now. And we wanted to come forth and talk about that meeting with you. With Matt, we did talk about, could we start, as we usually do with just our successes, and then move on to some of our action items and where we are, and then what we're going to be working on. And Matt will go through that. But we were, we started and introduced, and then Principal Robleski said, you know, I want to just take a moment to talk about what Matt's been doing. And so I want to just mention what Principal Robleski had to say. Matt's been busy. Director Miller's been a busy, busy man. And it puts a lot of context to what he's going to say next in terms of successes. He came in and from the very start, he's hired a full volleyball team of coaches. He's hired swim team coaches, synchronized swim team of coaches, gymnastics, full basketball team of coaches, wrestling coaches. And I left my list over there, so I forgot at least three or four. And with all that, you would expect, well, you know what, it probably was kind of a down year for us. And really quite the opposite, as you know, from our fall sports and from our winter sports, and I'll let him take off from here. But really, I'm excited to be able to be working on the council with Matt and to see the progress over the two years that has been made and continues, I feel like, stronger than ever with Matt now at the helm. So I'll pass it off to him.
Thanks, Dwayne. Making me blush. Chair Birdell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. It's an honor to be here tonight. And I'm here to brag about our kids for a little bit. So first and foremost, the Activities Department is in align with our mission statement. And I know Jeff read it, but I really want you guys to look at the bottom two and a half lines here. Discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. And I really grasp this out of our mission statement. And I want our kids, when they're participating, I really want them to develop tools for lifelong success. And then along with our mission statement, our core values, and this year, I really focused on excellence, even though we did face some adversity. But I did challenge our student athletes and our students participating in extracurricular activities to work in excellence. And working in excellence, just beyond what's expected, will bring you pretty far in life. So that was one of my goals this year. I'm going to brag about our winter successes. Our boys' basketball team, we were three points away from winning the conference championship. Our girls' basketball team won their first home section game in over ten years. So that was very fun to see our girls' team get a victory here at home. Gymnastics, they scored, their team had a high score of one oh five. That's the best in the past five years. They also put their time in the classroom. They had section, they were section academic champions. Boys' swimming, all of our varsity swimmers made it to finals. They made it past the semis, and that was at St. Kate's. And that was, that was really fun to watch. I was there to watch our boys compete in a larger pool. And they all made it to the finals. So. Wrestling, we sent Leandre Boswell. He went to the state tournament. He did continue on to finals the following day. So that was, that was fun to see one of our own get to the Xcel Energy Center. Robotics, we did participate in the state tournament. This program is really growing statewide, including Columbia Heights Public Schools. We also hosted a robotics event at Columbia Academy first time this year. I do plan on keeping that date, so we will continue to have. My goal is to continue to have at least one robotics event and invite other communities to come into Columbia Heights. Our competition down at the U of M, we took thirty-seventh out of sixty-five, which was good. We were happy with that, and we worked hard. Speech, we're up in participants. I think we had two people participate in speech, and now we're up to ten. So we want to gradually get bigger there. The arts, this one's a big one. Two of our seniors got gold keys, and what gold keys are, I would, I would compare a gold key to like winning the state tournament. If Leandre Boswell won the state tournament, it's the same thing. But it's for the visual arts. These two students, Jackie Anderson and Andrea Palmo, had their work sent, their portfolios evaluated. Thousands of kids submitted portfolios. And they were two out of seven from the state that got a gold key. So we were pretty proud of them. The spring musical, Spelling Bee, Jill Jungers continues to work extremely hard and keep her kids that are working right now. And it's getting longer days here, but it's dark out, and she's over there still working. So the plays, the show is April twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and then May first, second, and third. And those times are on our district website, too. I'm going to talk a little bit about spring activities, our numbers. In baseball, we have thirty-two signed up right now. Lacrosse, and I want to mention, we are maintaining. Couple of programs are bursting at the seams, like track, we're at a hundred. That's been a high for, we haven't seen a hundred participants in track for a long time here at Columbia Heights, so that's a good thing. Softball, we're at forty. Boys tennis, fifteen. Synchronized swimming, thirteen. The musical, there's over about, not about, there's over fifty kids helping out. If they're not in the play, they're helping out on lighting or they're helping out on stage. So Jill does recruit hard, and she's successful. Speech, again, had ten, and our robotics team is up from fifteen last year to twenty-five. I do want to touch on the Athena Award. Now, the Athena Award is for our top female athlete and student leader in our high school. We did have a panel of people who did vote. Bridget Ebert is our winner this year. We will, there's a ceremony May 2nd down at the Minneapolis Convention Center, and we will celebrate her there, too. Bridget's resume is unbelievable. So she's a thirteen-time letter winner, a three-sport athlete, senior captain, academic all-conference, six-time state contest winner for piano. Not a lot of people know that. But she does compete at the state level as a pianist. She's editor-in-chief for the school newspaper, and she's on National Honor Society and the band president. Update from the Minnesota State High School League, we did receive that grant, so that's good news. That money will help us continue have funding for after-school activity buses. As Dwayne was talking, we did, I am now a part of the Activities Council. Some of the things, I gave an update to the council, was the conference change. You guys know about that. We are entering into the tri-metro next year. Talked about transportation. We are running two activity buses every day, which really helps out with our students. The fee structure, excuse me, is set in place for our kids. And I can tell you right now, it's one of the best in the metro. So we do give opportunity for our kids to participate financially. Online registration, I'll just tell you right now, that's a work in progress. It's going to take a little while to train students and parents to register online. But it is, it is on my radar, and I do want to continue pressing that because it's, I'll just say it's less stressful in my office when students register online. And I continue to collaborate with the city, with the park and rec department. And then we did talk about the website, the Activities website, and that is definitely on my radar. That's going to change, that website. It's going to be used as a, one of my main sources for communication with parents and students. So I am working on that, and my goal is to have it laid out by August 1st. So for all activities and athletics, parents can go onto the website and actually use it. Current action items, again, collaboration with the city and rec department. I'm always going to be pushing to strengthen our feeder programs, because the stronger our feeder programs are, the more successful we will be at the high school level. Update on lifeguard certification in our pool. Any kind of activity in our pool, we do have a lifeguard on duty. Because from my department, safety is always, well, from our district, safety is always first. Again, the website is a work in progress, but I want to emphasize that that has to change for our parents. The council is adamant on that changing, so I will be working on that. And then participation database, what that is, is I'm just going to collect data and see the total number of students that participated, not only in athletics but activities for the year. And then you're probably always going to see the bottom one, facility improvements. Not that our facilities are bad, but it's always good to dream, so. Any questions or concerns?
I just have to ask, what are your dreams?
Oh, for, Bill, you better plug your ears. No, we need, we need some updates in our performing arts center. We need some updates in our main gymnasium. To have, this is a big one, to have turf out front for our programs would be great. But that's a dream, and that takes a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of grant writing, a lot of networking to get, to get that type of field and the updates that we can get. So that's a couple for you.
Are there any safety concerns?
For?
For any of those, any of those particular things that might be considered cause for concern?
No, not at this time. I mean, any kind of safety concern is handled right away. Because we want to be, again, we're always, it's safety first. So any kind of safety.
Proactive.
Yes. Any kind of safety concern that comes to my desk, we take care of right away, so.
I just want to make a comment. You mentioned the musical coming up at the end of the month.
Yes.
I think April is, there's so much going on in the arts this month, concerts and other musicals. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention. This is a great month to be in the schools, to see what's going on for arts-wise.
Thanks.
And I do want to say, I'm glad that we're continuing to collaborate well with the city. That's so important for us as a community to work together and enhance student opportunities, so thank you.
I agree. Yeah, thanks.
I actually did notice one other thing, too, that it doesn't look like there is any information as far as the band or choir or anything like that. That doesn't fall under the category of activities, because it would be kind of nice to know how many students are also participating in the arts as well.
Yep, and I can pull that data, too.
That would be really cool, although I should have asked. I'm trying to learn the proper way of doing this. Didn't mean to put you on the spot there.
No, no, that's fine.
Okay.
All right. Well?
Thank you. Thank you.
Are you still glad you made the switch?
Yes, I am.
Well, we know, I know you work a heck of a lot, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our action items this evening. First is a second reading of board policies, and I'll just briefly mention them here. 208 Development, Adoption and Implementation, Implementation of Policies. 533 Wellness. 615 Testing Accommodations, Modifications and Exemptions. 620 Credit for Learning. 624 Online Learning Options. 707 Transportation of Public School Students. 904 Distribution of Materials by Non-School Persons. And these policies appeared at the March 25th meeting for our first reading. We did have a comment. I think I'll ask for a motion first, and then I'll mention the comment.
I'll move that forward.
Second. Motion by Laura, second by John. We did have a comment on Policy 624 of misplaced strikeout, and that has been rectified. So... All right. Any other discussion, questions about the policies?
Were there any other comments?
Not aware of any. Nope. All right. Hearing none. All's in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, and motion is carried. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, Valley View addition bids. Bill Holmgren, Director of Finance and Operations.
Chair Bardell, member of the school board, Superintendent Kathy Kelly. Yes, tonight, I bring you the lowest bids for our new project over at Valley View. I've included in your packet a kind of, a tabulation. And also, there's a letter in there from Carl Sanderson recommending that we take these bids. And these are the lowest bids in each area. We've broken it down into 11 different scopes of work, so that the contracts we get are specialized in these areas. And I think I'll just, I'll just walk through them. One thing we are asking you to do tonight is to also approve alternate number two. And that is new doors and windows over top those doors over at Valley View Elementary. And it's the back main door, and it's the other side over by the playground area. And remember, some of those windows up on top are filled with cardboard, and not cardboard, but plywood. They will be all glass and will bring a lot of sunlight back into the building with that alternate. Okay. Green Construction Services, they actually bid on two of our different scopes. And because, and we've got a smaller price because they did two of them. So, we're looking at Green Construction Services to do all our site work, asphalt, and our utility work, along with the general construction of the building, with a total then of 900, 595,700. And this is, this might not be, you might not recognize the name, but it is the same company who did the work at Highland and also the work on the gyms out in front. They had a different name at the time, called, they were G8 Construction. So, this says green construction now, but it's the same company. Okay, our concrete and masonry work would be Axel Omen at 391,000. All of our Scope 4 casework and countertops, CSA, for 91,000. Roofing, diverse construction services at 124 and a half. All our aluminum entrances, storefront, curtains, windows, all the, pretty much all the glass work is Valpro for 182,843. And now, this is also the same company that all our glass work at Highland. Acoustical ceilings would be Twin City Acoustics for 58,250. Our flooring by Multiple Concepts Interiors, 696. Painting by Steinbrecker Painting, 177. And then, mechanical, all our mechanical by McDowell at 965,7. Again, this is the same company that all the work at Highland, just so you know that our buildings very well. And electrical, Scope number 11, NAC, for 274,000. And again, these are also a company that we just use. So, if you see the bigger, the bigger contracts here, the top four are actually repeat vendors. So, we're kind of excited about that because we worked with them very well at the last project. So, I'm just asked tonight that you would go ahead and approve these contracts for these contractors, and we'll get moving on the project.
Do I have a motion? Move that forward?
I'll move that forward.
Second.
Motion by Missy, second by Ted. Any questions, discussion for...
All the numbers are pretty much in line with what we've been expecting them to be as we move forward with the project.
Yes, this, at this point, the project is under budget. So, like Kathy talked about us borrowing the money the other day. We're within the dollars that we borrowed, so we feel very good about that. We're not having to come back and try to figure out where we're going to find a few dollars to finish it up. And we're good.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to say for the alternate, I'm sorry. Alternate two seems to make sense from a security standpoint as well.
Yeah. Well, I guess, just to piggyback on that, we did have, the alternate one that we're not recommending at this time was actually windows to go ahead and finish that whole building up. But because I have to use a different revenue source, we didn't have enough money to do it. It came in pretty high, and we're just going to have to wait for a different time to do that.
And when you say responsible, meaning that you vetted these bidders and...
Yeah. In this case, each one of these bidders, we're the lowest. But we always, we always look at all the references, and we make sure that everybody's happy with their work before that, before we work with them.
All right. Any other questions, comments for Bill? Hearing none. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Let's build a building. Break ground, no, tomorrow. Be great. Soon, yeah.
Is there a target date on that?
Yes and no, it's when the frost leaves the ground.
Oh, so...
Yeah, soon.
Better do it before it snows again.
Yeah. All right. Next on our agenda, board chair election. Just to recap, Mr. Bardell and Mr. Landwehr are up for board chair. And Ms. Lee, would you call the roll, please? Oh, yep.
Couple meetings ago, I believe it was, I presented my credentials and background and experience. And I just wanted to ask if there's anybody who has any questions, anybody would have concerns about my background or experience and ability to chair the board. Okay, I just wanted to give opportunity for anybody to ask questions on that. I am just looking for an opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, ready for the roll?
Palmer.
Landwehr.
Bardell.
Bardell.
Larkin.
Bardell.
Landwehr.
Landwehr.
Meyer.
Landwehr.
Lee Bardell.
All right, good. Tie boot. All right, board topics. Any board topics?
I'm reading an amazing book. If you get a chance to check out, she's actually got some information on her website. She's Debbie Silver. And although this is written by a teacher, she taught multiple grades over the years. A lot of her experiences in this book are basically revolving around her own educational experiences with her teenage sons. And so, I thought it was just amazing. She's very, very funny. I highly recommend everybody read. This is great for parents, too. Sometimes it teaches you when you, sometimes when you want to motivate a child how you say the wrong thing, and it doesn't cause them to motivate. It causes them to be complacent where they're at instead of striving for more. So, I'm just, I was, I love this book, and I highly recommend it. So...
I think anyone, those of us that have children probably want to read that book.
She's fabulous. She was so funny, too. And I'm trying to, we can actually get her presentation somewhere. I need to find it, and when I find it, I'll burn some copies of it and bring it so that all the board members can see it. It's about an hour long, but it's very, very good, very entertaining and very informative. So...
Thanks for the recommendation.
Yeah, I didn't know it was going to turn into a book review, but we'll go for it.
Nice. No, I think, you know, I think it's important, and I think we respect each other's opinions on things like that, books, and, you know, they're the good, I mean, or bad, whatever, you know? Don't waste your time or read them.
Never read, yeah, I've got a couple of those, but I'm not going to bring those to the board.
Thank you. Any other board topics this evening?
I'm looking at the things that are upcoming for schools. Kathy mentioned the sister city young artist thing at Mergent. And it looks like this must be Thursday, April 10th. Highland has their Fine Arts and Spring Concerts.
That's right.
So, if you're looking for things to do, and then the rest of the stuff is farther out in April, but that's this weekend, anyway, coming up.
Yep. Play's coming up, and then April 30th out at the Firehouse.
Columbia's got something on the 24th, so we'll keep letting people know.
Definitely Arts Month.
Yeah, definitely.
Best time of the year to be a school board member.
I do want to report, I checked with MSBA, Minnesota School Board Association, on interactive meetings and that we had last meeting. And there is something that we should probably change, the way we do that, in accordance with the statute. And I can talk to the administration and Chair Bardell.
Okay.
So, I want to report that.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Hearing no more board topics, we can adjourn at 8:22.